Any member of the town council who believes that there is a departure from their requirements of clauses one and two shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure leading their judgment has taken place. Mr. Linder.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stanley.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Doughty.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fields.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gilman.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tiller.
I wasn't.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Blainshipper.
Yes, ma'am.
Goodness, thank you, Diane. At this time, we can all rise for our invocation, follow the pledge of allegiance.
My gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to thank you, Lord, for all the blessings of life that you've bestowed on our town and county. We ask that you would continue blessing us, Lord, leading us and guiding us in the direction we have to go. In Jesus' name. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
Any council member have anything to add to the agenda that is currently on the agenda for discussion? Here now is a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll say.
Mary, uh, Diana's motion, may I say? All favor say aye? Those same side. We also have received the minutes from our April River Council meeting. Everyone had a chance to review those. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those who favor the motion say aye?
Aye.
I didn't hear all of you.
Aye.
Both the same side. Um, we also have received our council payables. Uh, Mr. Blainshipper, is any additions to the documents that we received?
No, sir.
Mr. Gilman, do you got everything?
Yeah, no additions here, Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to add one thing, Mayor. Uh, a recommendation, if you're ready for that.
Is it?
For the council payables.
We're paying a bill? Is it a bill that you want to add?
No.
Okay. We'll have to approve the bills and then you can make your recommendations at that point. Mr. Gilman?
No additions, Mayor. I made the motion to approve the April council payables.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay. Lives in your discussion, under discussions or something you want?
There is. Uh, before, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, I haven't made a motion where it needs to be done to let those credit card bills be paid prior to the council meeting to eliminate the interest charge.
The interest?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, that's second.
We can do that.
All those who favor the motions say aye?
Aye.
Both the same side. Mr. Linder?
I'd like to give a recommendation that Beverly be able to pay the credit card balances in full prior to council meeting to eliminate the interest charges.
Is there a second?
Say aye.
Any further discussion? All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Both the same side. Mr. Linder?
I'd like to give a recommendation that Beverly be able to pay the credit card balances in full prior to council meeting to eliminate the interest charges.
Is there a second?
Say aye.
Any further discussion? All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Both the same side. I have a, the list here for public requests and I see Bo on here. Uh, Mr. Coles, Bo, you'll be given the opportunity during the public hearing, I send you all here on the zoning request that was advertised.
Yes.
Okay. Is anyone else that needs to speak to council on the public request? Okay. At this time, I'm going to call a joint public hearing with eleven town council and eleven planning commission. Mr. Chairman, do you have one?
Yes, we do.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the, uh, public hearing over to you for consideration of applications.
Thanks, sir.
Diane, let's begin with Hughes' application. Mr. Tiller, please.
Okay. An application submitted by Natasha Hughes for conditional use permit to place apartments in the lower level of the building that is located at 459 West Main Street. All adjacent property owners have been notified.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak on the behalf of that petition?
Natasha's.
Ms. Hughes, please.
Yes.
Okay.
I am just planning to, um, do apartments while living in the lot part of the building next door.
Okay. Now, there were two, I think the reason of apartments down there with timeframe that passed, is that right, Kim?
Yes, sir.
So that's why we're having to reissue that to you, so we have to consider it again.
Right.
Okay.
Lady Commission, have any question? Thank you. Anyone here to speak in opposition to that petition? This time, I'll take the motion to approve the application as presented. I'll make my last. Have a second?
A second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Both the same time? Having done, Mayor, Diane, could you read the remainder, please?
An application submitted by Federal Regional Housing Development Corporation for conditional use permit for residential use, the property that is located at 1312 East Main Street. All adjacent property owners have been notified.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this, you probably heard earlier, but I think we have two folks here that wish to speak after Keith speaks.
I'm going to turn over Keith. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, town council, Lady Commission members appreciate your time this evening. Uh, and just quickly, the, you might want to let them know that you're a title, or figure of the year.
Sure. And again, my name is Keith Byers. I'm executive director for the Columbia Plateau Regional Housing Authority. Uh, the housing authority is developed in title one, the Southwest Regional Housing Development Corporation. And important consideration by the planning commission and town council, we have a conditional use permit for residential use. Uh, Thursday last week, the Housing Development Corporation acquired the old carriage house property with intent of developing elderly housing.
Elderly housing units?
Yes. That, and that being sixty-two plus.
Okay.
Uh, as defined. But, uh, I brought just a couple that I made, just for everybody's, I did not bring an easel, but the current, current property of the carriage house, we're looking at developing seventeen one-bedroom units. We're also looking at developing three commercial spaces. And I apologize, make sure I give everybody a chance to, uh, to get the three commercial spaces out on the other end. Get initial floor plans, and if I may, uh, just for...
Keith, if you don't care to show the public what the word Main Street is on that.
Sure. And, of course, Main Street being here, additional use permit would authorize, uh, commercial, uh, residential, but again, we're looking at developing three commercial spaces. Uh, and if I may, I'll just, a couple of other renderings to show what, what the properties were inevitably look like. They would be a duplex-looking home, but again, two units with one bedroom each. And I'm sure the town council would just...
Can I look at this quick? Are all those units placed Main Street and parking be in the back of the exit? What we know is carriage house, man, is it in, were you going to park folks in the back of their houses?
Yes, that would be correct, Mayor. Uh, the intent would be for the council first, not show everybody in attendance. Uh, we would try to develop main green, green space, excuse me, here on Main Street with parking to the rear for maybe housing. What we would develop though, would be parking to the front of Main Street for the commercial space.
How many years are about?
There would be seventeen total. This was originally designed, but that's up on top of the hill and the cost is probably prohibited, so this section would not be developed. But there would be seventeen total units and then three commercial.
Commercial was, was one thing I didn't understand.
The three commercial spaces. What we hope to do is a town, a three-town, but also one of the spaces, one of the spaces will be used for residential services.
Okay.
And one of the units, and I've got a commitment from the workforce development group to help hopefully put in, uh, some of their youth programs, with developing youth transitioning into, uh, into the market, the work, work markets, so...
Or does the existing carriage house, like, if it was...
It, it's currently through this whole, through this whole section. It, it comes all the way down to the corner here at Pocket Street and almost all the way up to Cedar Creek.
Another question I had too, Keith, when I saw these original, when this thing first was discussed, as you know, there's resident, right? Bring it back to us.
Sure.
So if you're placing a carriage house to the very left, we have residential folks, there's an access road up to their residential properties.
Correct.
Does the, does this, this project does not inhibit their exit and entrance to their properties? Is there anything?
No.
That changed that at all?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Yeah, and you're referring, excuse me, to Pocket Street and existing structures here?
Did we have, there's a few homes up, you know, access to that property.
Of course, it does not alter. Any access.
And I don't know if you had a chance to show the others a rendering of what they would look like, the second sheet.
And, uh, I've got a couple, and again, they are renderings, they're early, early drafts of what we're proposing. Uh, again, this being just a simplistic duplex with two units.
Now, that's facing Main Street, correct?
Yes. Yes.
That is?
This would be.
So you will see the green grass and the sidewalks attaching to the town sidewalk?
Correct. Uh, and again, pushing all the parking to the rear for the residential spaces, keeping the commercial space tied into Main Street. Some of these, kind of just a basic floor plan, nothing, they're, they're almost efficiency type units.
Is there any cap access, will mean all the federal guidelines, I'm sure?
That's correct, yes.
We're senior citizens, sixty-two, right?
Correct. And this is a general rendering of what we first thought about with the commercial spaces, the three commercial spaces. It would be facing Main Street.
The commercial space, okay.
That's correct. I have to think, um, just quickly, the commercial space, roughly seven hundred square foot per, per commercial space. And again, one of the units, we think we've identified a use with workforce development, one of them being with our resident services. Uh, we have been working to develop a lot of partnerships. One thing I hope to bring in is the appletion agency, senior citizens. The elderly housing that we're trying to develop with intent of aging in place. So we're trying to pack services, if you will, into the residential component. The residents could age in place.
So if the senior citizens have resources through the Appalachia Association of Senior Citizens?
Yes.
And services and that kind of stuff?
And specifically the PACE program.
Okay.
Uh, it is our hope that moving forward that we can incorporate also telemedicine. Uh, I do have some commitments with pharmaceutical, uh, ETSU to bring in some resources that can help seniors, specifically with managing medications and those kinds of things. Uh, our agency has also been, excuse me, we've been identified as a resource center to root apartment of housing for an invasion center, which is really to try to help youth build not only character quality, but also workforce development type activity moving into, uh, into the workspace, so. Those, I think there's a lot of energy in building in the services that we want to in addition to providing service for housing, but also potential for commercial space and, and help the town tax, those type things.
Are these rental, rental property or you buy them?
They will be rented and they specifically trying to address low-income, elderly residents, yes.
Senior citizens on fixed income, possibly the elder?
Yes. Sixty-two plus.
Sixty-two plus, okay.
Lady Commission, have any question? Lady Commissar, if you, anyone else to speak in favor of the application? Anyone speaking against the application?
You want to have questions? See, I got Bo, Bo?
Yeah, I've got questions too, they're pretty, they're pretty good.
Sure.
Counsel, thank you for your time. Uh, I'm here representing my mom who has property directly behind the carriage house. Uh, one of my main purposes for being here today is, is I wanted to see the plan because we've never seen that. I also noticed that Pocket Street, which runs from the old Russell Builders building, comes right by mom, mom's house and then goes down the side of the carriage house. That's currently running away, uh, going from, uh, west to east. Okay? Uh, on the east side, that's a steep hill. Uh, right now she is homebound, has full-time people that come in to stay with her. Uh, are we planning on abolishing Pocket Street? Uh, if so, what kind of hardship would that put on us to maintain that road, which would now become our driveway that is also shared with another property owner that I'm sure was not open because that property is not adjacent to the carriage house property?
There's, there are no plans at this point to abandon the street behind the carriage house?
Well, according to the plan there, it looks like it's going to keep.
Well, it shows the existing road, but we know, I mean, we've got to get our, we got to come in there, I'm assuming Keith, the dumpsters will be on that, on the back side of that property, which means we'll have to, have to come through like normal to pick up the trash with our garbage trucks.
See, I'm showing, this is, this is my property here.
Yeah.
Okay? So this road currently goes all the way down, but you're showing it is stopped.
I think that's just showing the green space that's out there. I don't think that's the scale. There's already, if you remember, there's a group, there's a bunch of growth of trees there already, if you go on Pocket Street.
It don't, it's above, it's above that road though. They've got it down over the road against that property and it don't, it's not like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. This road, this road would continue straight down to here, just the way it currently is.
Old old Russell Builders, the road that's there now.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we don't shut that road there, which means that our only in and out would be go up this steep hill right here.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's, that's just what I'm concerned about. Now, I don't see, our property lines don't go here, so I don't see you interrupting the road in front of our property. Uh, I was concerned about property value, uh, not having frontage, or we once had frontage and, uh...
Well, compared to what you've got in front of you now, we've got a healthy property value.
I don't, I, we do not object, uh, to doing something with the carriage house.
Yeah.
Not whatsoever. Uh, I'm just concerned about what the overall plan was.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just wanted to get my...
So you're accessing Mr. Mom's house, you're coming to hide the carriage house?
Yes.
Right now, with all that road?
Yeah.
Is there, are there any other proprietors that access their property that, Mr. Cox, or you, oh, excuse me, Mr. Coles, or do you access on the same road?
No, I don't. Uh, I am right here, but I have blocks that run down here to make this property. I've got two blocks that I bought that come down here.
Okay.
Uh, it won't affect me as far, as far as this is the way it is.
Yes, sir.
But the way it's broad here and everything, I'm like Bo, that street's will stop right there because it don't show a street here. It shows coming here. Are they still going to leave that street open?
There's been no discussion to close that street by the council.
Okay. Another, it shows these here. There's a high wall there. It's not fenced and that's, if I'm not mistaken, that's against the law. That thing is not safe and you can ask a tarred horn if it is still alive, and it's not safe because it went over. So, something has to be done with that high wall because these buildings right here is going to be right under a high wall.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Byers and the architects and engineers will go back and review that for safety.
Okay, you've got this up here. Now, does, did, did y'all buy this property too?
Uh, this is the, the actual lot, I think included this section, but this, this is...
This property was bought by other people, didn't it?
Uh, it may be this lot.
No. No. That trailer, there's a trailer there.
Yeah, there was a trailer there.
There's a trailer and stuff that's in there.
And we don't know the...
I think Hannah owned that as well.
Huh?
I think Hannah owned that as well.
She did, she sold the trailer and I don't know how much property she sold with it.
Yeah.
Is that...
And the bill share and everything, you're going to have the high wall this, this too. If you, if you bill share, you're going to have the high wall this right here.
That, that was initial projections that we're, we're not developing that. It was cost prohibitive.
Well, there's likely...
It will be on that, just because of what...
My property, like I said, my property here, but it runs down here. It comes right in here to this...
Right. And, and again, we have no intent on disrupting, uh, flow.
Okay.
And again, this is a rendering. It's not the model.
And I'm not objecting to the zoning change whatsoever. Uh, I just, I would like to be more informed about what the future roads will install as regards to our property values and, and the loyalty of the...
Mayor, Mr. Byers, can we get the adjacent property owners a copy of the renders?
Well, I, I, I would...
I'm going to know the preliminaries.
That's not, that one there is not accurate.
I'll take pictures of that when we break in.
Yeah, and just if you could, you know, maybe meet with Keith?
Yeah.
You know, if it's all right with Keith, absolutely, Smokes?
Yeah.
You can get an accurate picture because I'm sure the architects and engineers, I'm like them, I, I don't see the road they're talking about near that, that green spaces overrun the road that they're talking about, Keith.
Yeah, and they, they have the mapping for the town curves and the elevations.
Yes.
But, but, uh, I'm well ahead of myself, if you will, that we're not even to that point yet and we are looking to try to require funding to actually build, uh, to build the project.
I thought probably a twenty-foot bank right here that goes down to the carriage house.
Is that a town street? Is that a town street?
It is a town street.
It's not a state street, it's town street.
And Mayor, if I, if I may, and thank you for bringing that up because a point was just made, I want to make sure I clarify. Uh, the three commercial spaces that we would like to develop here are at ground level from Main Street, but we are stacking three, uh, one-bedroom units on the top, which would put the back entrance kind of at ground level to the hill that you're referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, so that it's not like we would take that grade off. Uh, these, back three, yeah, would actually be at ground level in the rear and then the three commercial spaces be in the ground level, uh, to make the street. Been hearing this back.
The entrance, the entrance to those three are going to be on the back street?
Correct. Yeah, they would have parking to the rear.
Right in front of Benigan's house.
Yeah.
I'll take the parking lot first, is what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, there's one other thing, uh, that I'd like to, uh, you said it's going to be sixty-two years or older?
Correct.
Uh, is this going to be enforced?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. The, uh, the guidelines, uh, and, Mayor...
Guidelines, the guidelines, they supposed to be guidelines and stuff or the ones filled out?
Fox Motors.
Fox Motors and they're not...
Those are all getting done, though.
We have a lot of, if you'll ask policemen how many times they've been to Fox Motors in this last year.
I'm acutely aware and I get, I get the police department reports every, every...
When I moved up on that hill, I didn't need locks, I didn't need nothing. I could leave anything out in the yard, I could leave anything outside, it didn't matter. There was nothing stolen, there was nothing taken and right now, everything is double locked, alarm system on the house and it's still not safe up there because we had a shooting right next door this last week.
Look at that.
So this is...
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Anything further, anyone?
Right, the town, they come up and you approve the application presented?
I would make a motion based on what they have brought up. Does that need to be addressed first before we...
Mayor, we've not came across this kind of situation. We're, we're looking at something that may be and something that, I don't know how we need to word this to make sure that Mr. Rose and Ron, their concerns are well met.
Legitimately.
I think, I think it's good in, in the, I think it's like the requirements when you issue conditional use permit.
Right.
You're repending one, two, three items, Lee, what?
Well, I think we would have to say, given depending upon the, the state and town guidelines for the roads and so forth.
I mean, they can't close that road anyway. I mean, that's town road.
So would that be sufficient, think to...
I mean, the town...
I have, I have a...
The town council has...
I never heard any council members talk about closing that road.
Okay. Is that, so you're making a motion? I would make a motion to approve it based on the fact that the concerns that they have are, are met. You know, the road's not closed.
Well, and, and clear enough that maybe Bo and, and Mr. Coles can meet with Keith to clear, show them that, I love Dave Burge, Keith, show them that road, which is not open.
So they should see this and, you know, you know, discuss.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
But you're showing it is stopped.
I think that's just showing the green spaces out there. I don't think that's the scale. There's already, if you remember, there's a group, there's a bunch of growth of trees there already. If you go on Pike Street.
It don't, it's above, it's above that road though. They've got it down over the road against that property and it don't, it's not like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This road, this road would continue straight down to here.
Old town Russell buildings, the road that's there now.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we don't shut that road there, which means that our only in and out would be go up this steep hill right here.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's, uh, that's just what I'm concerned about. I don't see, our property lines didn't go here, so I don't see you interrupting the road uh, in front of our property. Uh, I was concerned about property value, uh, not having frontage where we once had frontage and uh.
Well, compared to what you've got in front of her now.
Oh, yeah.
We've got a healthy property value.
We do not object, uh, uh, to doing something with the carriage house.
Yeah.
Not whatsoever. Uh, I'm just concerned about what the overall plan was.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just wanted to get my.
So you're accessing Mr. Ma's house, you're coming to the carriage house.
Yeah.
Right now, with all that road.
Yeah.
Is there, are there any other property owners that access their property that Mr. Cox, or you, uh, excuse me. Mr. Collins, or do you access them the same road?
No, I don't. Uh, I am right here, but I have blocks that run down here to make this property. I've got two blocks that I bought that come down here.
Okay.
Uh, it won't affect me as far, as far as this is the way it is.
Yes, sir.
But the way it's broad here and everything, I'm like Bo, that street's will stop right there because it don't show a street here. It shows coming here. Are they still gonna leave that street open?
There's been no discussion to close that street by the county.
Okay. Another place, it shows these here. There's a high wall there. It's not fenced. And that's, if I'm not mistaken, that's against the law. That thing is not safe. And you can ask a tarred horn if it is still live, and it's not safe because it went over. So, something has to be done with that high wall, because these buildings right here is gonna be right under a high wall.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Byers and the architects and engineers will go back and review that for safety, uh.
Okay, you've got this up here. Now, does, did, did y'all buy this property too?
Uh, this is the, the actual, uh, lot, I think included this section, but this, this is.
This property was bought by other people, didn't it?
Uh, it, it may be this lot.
No, no. That trailer, there's a trailer there.
Yeah, there was a trailer there.
There's a trailer and stuff that's in there.
And we don't know.
I think Anna owned that as well.
Huh?
I think Anna owned that as well.
She did, she sold the trailer and I don't know how much property she sold with it.
Yeah.
Is that?
And the bill of shares, sharing everything, you're gonna have to high wall this, this too. If you, if you bill share, you're gonna have to high wall this right here.
That, that was initial projections that we're, we're not developing that. It, it was cost prohibitive.
Well, there's like a big building on there.
Yeah.
Uh, just because of what.
My property, like I said, my property here, but it runs down here. Comes right in here to this.
Right. And, and again, we have no intent on disrupting, uh, flow.
Okay.
But, and again, this is a rendering. It's not the model.
And I'm not objecting to the zoning change whatsoever. Uh, I just, I would like to be more informed about what the future flows will soon.
Sure.
As regards to our property values and, and the will be.
With the law.
Mayor, Mr. Byers, can we get the adjacent property owners a copy of the renders?
Well, I, I, I would give it to them. If it's not, that one there is not accurate.
I'll take pictures of that when we break it.
Yeah, and just if you could, you know, maybe meet with Keith.
Yeah.
You know, if it's all right with Keith, absolutely smokes.
Yep.
You can get an accurate picture, because I'm sure the architects and engineers, I'm like them, I, uh, I don't see the road they're talking about near that, that green spaces overrun the road that they're talking about.
Yeah, and they, they have, uh, the mapping for the town curves and the elevations.
Yes.
But, but, uh, I'm well ahead of myself, if you will, that we're not even to that point yet. And we are looking to try to acquire funding to actually build, uh, to build the project.
I thought probably a twenty foot bank right here, uh, that goes down to the carriage house.
Is that a town street?
Uh.
Is that a town street?
It is a town street.
It's not a state street, it's town street.
And matter of fact, if I may, and thank you for bringing that up, because a point was just made, I want to make sure I clarify. Uh, the three commercial spaces that we would like to develop here are at ground level from Main Street. But we are stacking three, uh, one bedroom units on the top, which would put the back entrance kind of at ground level to the hill that you're referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, so that it's not like we would take that grade off. Uh, these back three, yeah, would actually be at ground level in the rear. And then the three commercial spaces being at ground level, uh, to make the street. That here in this back.
The entrance, the entrance to those three are gonna be on the back street?
Correct. Yeah, they would have parking to the rear.
Right in front of Benega's house.
Yeah. I'll take the parking lot versus what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, there's one other thing, uh, that I'd like to, uh, you said it's gonna be sixty-two years or older?
Correct.
Uh, is this gonna be enforced?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. The, uh, the guidelines, uh, and there.
Guidelines, the guidelines, they supposed to be guidelines and stuff or, uh, the ones filled out?
Fox Meadows.
Fox Meadows.
Those are all getting done though.
Uh.
We have a lot of, if you'll ask policemen how many times they've been to Fox Meadows in this last year.
I've, uh, I'm acutely aware and I get, I get the police department reports every, every.
When I moved up on that hill, I didn't need locks, I didn't need nothing. I could leave anything out in the yard, I could leave anything outside, it didn't matter. There wasn't nothing stolen, there wasn't nothing taken. And right now, everything is double locked, alarm system on the house. And it's still not safe up there because we had a shooting right next door this last week.
So this is.
Okay, thank you Keith.
Anything further, anyone?
Right, this time I'll take them up and we approve the application presented.
I would make a motion based on what they have brought up. Does that need to be addressed first before we?
Mayor, we've not came across this kind of situation. We're, we're looking at something that may be and something that, I don't know how we need to word this to make sure that Mr. Rose and Ron, their concerns are, are well met.
Legitimately.
I think, I think it's good in, in the, I think it's like a one of the requirements when you issue conditional use permit.
Right.
You're repending one, two, three items, Lee.
Well, I think we would have to say, given depending upon the, the state and town guidelines for the roads and so forth.
I mean, they can't close that road anyway. I mean, that's town road.
So, would that be sufficient to?
I mean.
I have, I have a, I never heard any councilperson talk about closing that road.
Okay.
Is that, so you're making a motion?
I would make a motion to approve it based on the fact that the concerns that they have are, are met. You know, the road's not closed.
Well, and, and clear enough that maybe Bo and, and Mr. Collins can meet with Keith to clarify, show them that. I love Dave Burris and Keith showing that road, which is not all of it.
So they should see this.
Well, they can see it.
All right. Make a motion, do I have a second?
I'll make the second.
All right, so, all in favor of people trying to say it, I vote the same time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, this time I'll close the joint dedication with the town council and the planning commission. Mr. Chairman, I call you again. A real handle that you just wanted to tell.
All right, sir.
So, does, you have a recommendation for council?
Uh, yes, we have a recommendation on a mission to use the application to be approved by the town council. Uh, Mr. Byers's application, we request it be approved as well.
All right, I think we're taking a vote. One motion, let's do this Hughes is first.
I'm gonna get a motion, Mayor.
So a second?
I'll sit.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay, do we, uh, do I have a motion regarding the project at the, uh, application at the current carriage house?
I'll make that motion.
So a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Chairman, and on behalf of the council, we wish to thank our planning commission for the services you provide us in dealing with matters of property that you all deal with monthly, it seems like here lately. Uh, we appreciate your service and we thank you. And, uh, Bo and Mr. Collins and Keith, thank you all for being here. I would say Keith, uh, you might want to get a contact info from Mr. Rose and Mr. Collins, so you all can communicate, okay? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, Mr. Jessica Prue with the book box. Y'all heard anything, Diane or Kevin?
She's supposed to be here.
Okay. Well, as she shows up late, we're here then has a howdy hat. Okay, this time, Mr. Lester, you're next up under new business, out of A, uh, Leach Lake. So, I see you here, Mr. Ferguson with you. At this point, we'll turn the floor over to you. Well, I'd love to, thanks for being with us tonight.
Y'all have a bad time with my man.
Do my, do my.
It helps a bit. Captain, members, I want to thank you for the opportunity, opportunity I had. We have met with a couple of other council members of the town eleven. We discussed, you know, what they say, you've shown a project that we're currently doing in the county. Um, as everyone knows, as the town eleven, so is the county currently developed their FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And these are a little bit different, especially coming out of the pandemic or coming, trying to come out of the pandemic. And of course, you know, give the services that we need to the rest of county citizens. So as part of our financial planning, the county, uh, is currently purchasing a leche slash disposal truck. And this will have a dual purpose. It will, as everyone knows, during the pandemic, everybody cleaned out their, their garages. We had an overrun in our sides of trash, but also during our planning, we have also purchased a piece of equipment along with the containers to be able to do a purpose. It will haul the trash during the times that we don't have to haul leche, because as some of y'all may or may not know, leche is seasonal. It depends upon when it rains. It's, it's usually more heavy during the spring, sometimes during the fall, summer, and then during the fall. So it has its peaks and valleys on volume. So during the meantime, when we're not hauling leche, we will be hauling trash. And of course, we have a disposal site in the town eleven. It's one of the nicest ones in the county. And what we are doing, uh, right now, what I'm back before the board as a whole, as, as for council's consideration is, currently, we have a gentleman's agreement with the town eleven. We have no form of agreement, no form of contract in place. So what we are to do, as we're still working through our budget, we're having a reconvene meeting next week with our budget and to be able to finalize our, our county budget in June. So in the meantime, for this, for the council's consideration, I would ask for a formal contract and reconsideration of the true cost that the county currently has with us. So, uh, that's why I'm here before you deny. And, uh, I'll take any questions that y'all have. I think Brian is giving you handouts of volumes of what we do. We do approximately two million gallons with y'all a year. That is the annual average currently. Y'all charge five cents per gallon. So we have taken over the, uh, our contract portion to lower the cost. And we're looking at other components to it as far as the treatment. So, that being said, uh, again, the council's consideration before you develop your budget, uh, come to a formal agreement with the county on treatment of leche.
Can you tell us what you mean? I mean, you said we're looking at other components to handle leche. Can you go into a little bit more depth about that?
Right now, the county currently hauls to the town eleven for treatment. However, that county may build a two, two, two million plus a year. We also have the Danesworth treatment plant that we're currently on. So, right now, we can also, you know, treat it at that facility. So we're looking at that.
You, you can treat it at that facility today or without upgrading?
Our, our facility has been upgraded.
At night?
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, we are currently treating to get that done. We also have the permit in place. We are running tests right now at Danes. We have, uh, run, come on again.
Uh, we run ten thousand gallon last week.
Yes, so we're already testing both places.
Permitted, when you say permitted, are you talking to DQ permit, what kind of?
We're running tests through DQ. We're running a test trial until July.
Yes. So, as part of consideration, you know, we're planning as part of the leche. So we're trying to, again, lower the cost of the county and being able to either, you know, work with the town. But we also, you know, looking at our costs and our, our financial planning, we got also to have an alternative. If something happens to the town, to such a plant at eleven, we have to have a backup, because one of the things that DQ will not let us do is have an excuse. If you go down, we gotta have an alternate treatment. So again, we're asking for the council to, for consideration for a formal agreement and consideration for lowering the cost.
Is the, the disposal at Danes, is it permitted based on so many gallons at this point? Like ten thousand a month or something? Is that why that number was?
Well, Danes got a, they can discharge so many gallons. I'm sure eleven's got the same. I'm not exactly sure, but no matter what they take in, they got like a base unit, am I correct on that?
Yes. Our, our Danesworth treatment plant has a hundred twenty-five thousand gallons per day capacity.
What does that mean in terms of leche that can be disposed of, that location?
Well, they just, they mix it in with their process, with their sewage and everything. Just, that's the total gallons, total, like.
Right, well, based on one hundred twenty-five, what does that mean as far as leche that can be disposed of, if you mix it in or whatever?
Our leche, if we have a hundred twenty-five thousand gallon capacity, we currently on a good day, and that's with the input, we are probably maybe at forty to fifty percent of capacity. So therefore, we could actually run a higher volume. When you mix the leche with the feces, that's, that's the process of that. I mean, this is not a good conversation to have, but it, it actually, uh, dilutes it down, number one. Number two is, based off our trip, our tests with, uh, Draper, Draper, which is our engineers, it's almost tested, and I think y'all have the test results, sorry, it's almost at groundwater right now. So there's, there's not much of an effect on our treatment plant if we do it at the Danes. So.
So how much leche can it take at this point?
Right now, we could take what comes off the volume off the landfill per day easily.
Yes, sir.
What, what do you think, Brian? The maximum loads is what, ten thousand?
I mean, you can see on the chart there.
That's ten thousand. So we're, we have a hundred twenty-five thousand gallon capacity. We're only running with feces, you know, at thirty, forty to fifty percent capacity. So, you know, we're not, we're not even coming to the high bar, even with. But again, you remember, leche is not a continuous everyday treatment, the same as with the town eleven. It mixes with your feces at the drop point and it's seasonal, you know, in the spring, some in the summer, and then in the fall. But again, the total aggregate, it is over right near two million gallons per year.
Are y'all gonna start hauling it yourselves?
We are.
On its own already, or is that something started July 3rd?
Well, the test that we're doing at Danes, we're hauling ourselves. We, uh, got the, using the truck from the P S A right now to do a temporary haul. And then first of all, I should have a roll-off trucks and the equipment to haul with.
So is the goal of the county ultimately to haul it all to Danes if there's a charge at eleven?
What we're trying to do is the county is, as Brian will tell you, we're looking at alternatives, um, between, we have already opted dual trucks. We're already in the process. So again, trash and leche. Of course, if every time we cram as, as well as you do in the county, as well as you do in the town, that costs the, the taxpayers. We're trying to find a balance to where the treatment to cop, to treat in here versus the tram cost versus the tram cost at Danes versus the tram cost to here. So that's what we're trying to balance. And that's why we're asking for consideration for, uh, lowering the treatment cost at the town eleven. Because right now, we can, we can treat it at our treatment plant. We are right now at the Danes. But it also has additional costs with, with the transportation, that's a longer train time, a larger train time with our equipment, our operators, and their with, uh, on a, on a, we can do more tram loads per day coming to eleven than we can today because of the tram distance.
Do you foresee by the end of the next fiscal year that you'll be disposing more at Danes than you will at eleven? Will we be the secondary site?
Depends what your cost is. That's, that's, that's just operations.
So would the Danes, uh, plant then, would it be able to handle all your leche?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the St. Paul plant in this discussion anywhere, or are they, are they, are they operational yet to handle the leche?
The St. Paul plant is, right now, currently, the county has a capacity agreement with one-third of the sewer treatment plant at St. Paul.
Okay.
Now, we, we have already been working with DQ. We are treating at the Danesworth treatment plant. Now, again, the county is also into a grant, a D H C grant, to run those two hundred and twenty-three percent customers from Danes to the St., the St. Paul treatment plant, which we have a third capacity, which we're paying on as far as the county. Now, if the treatment ends up going to completely at the Danesworth treatment plant, that treatment plant will be put online with the St. Paul treatment plant. We were just hook it up, that's where the line starts, and it will continue from the Danesworth treatment plant to the town of St. Paul. That's the plan right now.
That's probably about two, two, three years out.
Two years out.
Two years.
But one of the things that we gotta consider is, and in county, sincerely, we've had great partnership with the town eleven. But one of the things that we're doing, we're having an increased end disposal, which we had to find an alternative for. We've had an increase, of course, in leche, so we had to cut our costs. We didn't raise personal property, as we didn't raise real estate. So therefore, we had, only way that we can have the same service is to cut costs. So by having a truck with dual purpose, we're able to cut the cost of our contracts, but that was immediately. Okay, the next step, I've got a dead load that goes along with that, the St. Paul, the Danesworth treatment plant. So therefore, I've got to look at either the haul or the treatment to make sure that the revenues properly balances out for the budget.
So is the, is the haul roughly, what do you figure, roughly double what it is coming to eleven today?
Yeah, it's a little bit longer. I think we could probably haul even more extra load.
No, distance wise, I know it's not.
Yeah, it's longer, but when you, over a year's time, I think if you figure it out, it ain't, it ain't got, what about, seven thousand dollars difference a year. Haul today is the biggest difference. You know, you got a little bit of fuel and then the man had her time to figure all that in.
See, what you gotta remember, not one truck is, once what we had set up, not one truck will be doing the run. The path, the map, the, uh, process that we put in place, we've got three trucks now that can run leche. We can run leche. All three trucks are retrofitted with tanks that will be able to pull. And we've also are putting additional storage tanks at the, the landfill to be able to pull what we need to pull, not at the, at the weather. As the tanks fill in, one of the things that we have to do, if the DQ requires us, these tanks fill up, we have, right now, we have to currently truck them to the town eleven, okay? Now, with our extra capacity, with additional truck and extra storage containers, one, we can haul at need when we need to. Number two, if, it also dilutes it down much farther into concentration into groundwater when we do the treatment.
Is the county proposing, and that might be what you meant by hook up from Danes, we go straight to St. Paul. Is the county proposing to close the facility at Danes?
Uh, no, not yet. It depends upon the cost and the operations. It, it all comes down to what is the best for the county and the council.
That has been discussed, right?
Yes, it has.
And then, St. Paul, St. Paul's discussions with the county, they were okay with taking the domestic sewage?
That's already agreed that we have.
Right.
Yes, we're up there.
They're up in the air on taking the leche?
Uh, by the time, it is not really no concern. By the time we treat the leche at the Danesworth treatment plant, it goes into their lines, it's groundwater anyway. Only thing it will do is help keep the lines more clean with more volume of water.
That's if the Danesworth treatment plant stays up.
Yeah, that's if the Danesworth treatment.
So it's closed, now your, now your, um, industrial waste to St. Paul, are they, I mean, are they okay with that, for your discussion?
Um, if we close the Danesworth treatment plant, well, the thing about the Danesworth treatment plant, we just retrofitted it. It's, it was just approved and permitted by DQ. We, uh, we had to up cost. We included a lot of the maintenance and the cost. So right now, it's full operation. And as far as I was saying, look at the useful life of a good operation, I would put at least another seventeen years useful life on the asset.
On the Danes, the sewage?
That permit's only due for five years, right?
Yes.
The new permit. So the pipeline for grant runs out, what is, is that to run a, a pipeline, a sewage pipeline from Danes to St. Paul?
Yes, sir.
That's the one you said was a two-year-plus project?
It is two-year, two, in two years, it's a, being a two-point-five million dollar project. It's fully grant, but are perhaps, we can develop.
So I guess my question is, is why would the county use a tax dollar grant to run a pipeline from Danes to St. Paul if they're gonna leave the Danesworth treatment plant open?
Well, after, right now, currently, we have six, five-point-five years remaining on the dead load. We have, right now, based off of what we're treating, we make the revenues on that right now for the treatment. But the problem is this, right now, we're only running forty to fifty percent capacity. So this will give it alternative use, also to offset the dead load.
Okay, I've got two more questions. Uh, you're talking about leche being seasonal. And just so I can clarify, it's not really seasonal. There's times that it's heavier than others, but it constantly flows. Because on average, I think we did, we did the numbers, probably seventy-two hundred gallons a week in a day. Is that correct, Chris?
It is.
So that's, I mean, you're talking seventy-two hundred gallons a day that we put into our separate system here to be treated.
Over an average of a year. It would probably come out to that.
I think that's what we did as average of the year, but obviously during January, February, March, April, it's heavier due to, due to precipitation. I just want to make sure the council understood it's not seasonal. It's just heavier and more, more of a precipitation.
That's right. But one thing you must remember is, with our extra capacity of storage, that, that seventy-two will be at our wheel. Do you see what I'm saying? We, between the trucks and this, where you can look at what's the capacity on the containers of us going around now, what twenty-five thousand gallons, fifty thousand gallons that we can maintain wheel.
So Lonzo, to begin of the discussion tonight, you mentioned about, and I remember the agreement, it wasn't necessarily a handshake, it was a letter.
Like even, that's way before all of us.
Back in the late, when I was living, so back in the late nineteen nineties. But you're, and I understand, board is kind of one, if I understand, your board is on a formal agreement.
For budget plan.
For budget, and so they'll know, uh, what the plan is, et cetera. So, we're currently at five cents.
That is correct. That is correct.
When you say a formal agreement, do you have a figure that you wish to talk to the panel about considering?
Well, to be fair to the council, you know, again, like Brian and I have stated right now, we're still running through the test. I, I will not state any, you know, I'm, as far as cost, to be true to the cost, because we're trying to work with either, you know, the St. Paul project or the, or the town of Dainte. We still have a little bit more of analysis to do with the DQ, just to be fair.
So you're not necessarily ready to sign the agreement?
Not yet.
Or to propose a fee?
Not yet, till we get a little bit more testing done. I, we're here to ask for consideration for the end of your planning for a formal agreement, and look at it based off of your budget, because you have to plan the same way we do.
That's right.
You have June thirties coming at you the same way we do. So we're coming down to the line in the last seven weeks here, so.
Okay.
And ours is budget, we have right now scheduled by the first of June, so we're, we're moving on these targets, but, uh...
But you're not ready to get, you're not ready to talk about the per cent gallon yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
No.
Well, I'm, I'm, I respect, me personally, I don't think we did, I'm, I'm not for cutting any, I think we're at five cents. And I don't think we're making, breaking even at that. And that's just my opinion.
But Mr. Durney, if we wanted to, I mean, to have that agreement with the county, is that something that we could get to ban?
You know, I think it's going to be a cooperative, it's just like, it's gonna have to, Mr. Taylor had me out, I suspect that the agreement originated from the county, is that correct?
I think so, yes.
So, yes, to answer your question, it'd have to be, it appears to me your board will have to approve the agreement, just like this everybody would have to approve.
Absolutely.
So wouldn't be us delivering an agreement since we're giving the service?
That's what I'm asking.
It could be either way, you know.
Well, you tell me the, what's the best way?
Well, I mean, even, I, I guess your operator's under an operator, um, you know, specified manner right now. The county's asking to change that, you need to know exactly how they're asking to change it, so.
Well, actually, to answer your question.
If you have specifics of what you want changed, then, you know, either, either side can actually prepare a final agreement.
Okay. But we originated the original fee, just by the point. We sent, closed a letter that was sent from here to the county administrator. So if that's your question, I think it's a joint effort.
Is there any idea when DQ's test and results will be back?
The testing right now, they're, they're doing weekly tests. If we have to keep up all the data, we taste test the personal every day, as far as conductivity and pH and force other. And, uh, we'll go to July, and then we'll review it and then go from there.
So could we, could we not just uphold what we've got going on now, then July or August, y'all come back and we touch waste again?
We're good.
Y'all put that aside, we can test.
I think we need to do that anyway, because, uh, as you've said, you're, we're in the same boat you are as a board and as administrator. In fact, we're right in the middle of our budget as well. And obviously, we're not gonna, we're not gonna run out of our way to reduce revenue, to reduce revenue to the town for our operations. And it's kind of like what Gold was saying a minute ago, Chris and Chris back there, they've been talking to Kevin and our operators, they have the knowledge of what it's costing us, and I haven't yet seen when we're making money on this. And as Chris and Chris tell me different, now, it's kind of, it, it's just, it's kind of a little quack for all of us, you know?
It is.
Mayor, um, Lonzo, would it be, are you thinking maybe doing an annual agreement that renews every year? That both of us can get out of it like ninety-day notice, kind of like with our other waste management agreements that we have?
Well, and my legal counsel will tell you, and as far as our contracts and agreement, we do like three-year contracts with one-year intervals. That way it could be, that's just.
That's what your laws are, three with one-year renewals?
Yes, with one-year renewals and negotiation upon leave of pardon.
Brown, do you have your waste manager's license to the state?
I've got my, to run the solid waste.
Okay.
On that end.
Do we have, there has to be plans and designs on leachate in the landfill. Can we get a copy of that term view?
Well, as far as leachate, so with ninety-five, we closed the landfills, these are closed landfills. I need Q to do the close, all we gotta do is collect the leachate and take it to a wastewater treatment plant. As far as that, only time we have to test the leachate is that to request a wastewater treatment plant. And I think we've done two tests, sixteen and twenty, and that was just as far as us. And, you know, I started five years ago, so a lot of this is new to me and I'm learning as I go. But as far as DQ, they've never asked, all I gotta do is provide the records, the spreadsheet, that's what I provide them. How their daily flow, we're collecting, make sure we're collecting it, they come to inspect the landfill, make sure there's no seepages or anything on the cap.
I'm gonna back up a little bit, Lonzo, but you were talking about the date, you mentioned St. Paul project, which is that pipeline, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, you were talking about the dates running roughly forty to fifty percent, which is roughly forty-five to sixty thousand gallons a day?
We have a hundred twenty-five thousand gallon day capacity.
But you're on a hundred forty percent?
Yes.
Okay, so recommended with a biological wastewater treatment plant, how much leachate can you take on percentage-wise? That, that's kind of, that's kind of one of the, Chris Pritt and I talked about, the percentage of leachate versus what you're diluting. Because obviously the concentration's gonna be higher if you have less.
Well, you're, you're trying to think from the perspective that we're bringing in seventy-five hundred gallons and put it in with the forty percent, right? We have an alternate tank that we can release at wheel. We don't have to dump seventy-five hundred gallons, we can set and implement it into the other tanks. We have three containers there that we can set and operate at any time, plus the extra storage capacity.
But eventually, that storage capacity, you're coming around, because it's a pound of seventy-two hundred gallons a day. See what I'm saying, sir?
Same, but we're still treating, isn't it? I mean, we can treat on a daily, daily basis.
But is, what's the percentage of leachate versus regular wastewater?
But what you gotta remember also is the concentration of the leachate. What, what our engineers are telling us, Ron Gerber, is it is groundwater content, very high, you know, very trace amounts of, you know, of anything that is above groundwater.
So they're saying that's irrelevant?
So, so that's available when you get.
Okay, that was my question, they're saying the leachate that we're currently hauling, you're relevant to the concentration?
By the time, yes, it's not, it doesn't need a mixture.
Mayor, I, you know, I've, I've probably heard more on this than most of the council. I understand if the council wants to take more time to get information, but I, you know, I was in that meeting with Lonzo and Brian Flair, and after speaking to our operations superintendent, I agree with Mr. Fields, that keeping it at five cents at least for one year would be my suggestion to the council. I appreciate Lonzo and Brian coming, and I, I understand our position.
Who else?
Any more questions?
I'm a little stoked.
Thank you.
I'm about to talk about Lonzo.
Thank you all.
Thank you, council members.
Uh, our senior graduations, yard signs, uh...
Can we just, just deliver that to the beach?
I got a whole press. When we take a break, I think I'll have, you know, the dining and press on.
The press.
The press, I know the press.
Maybe I'll have some say.
I'm gonna pay you. Uh, we'll take a ten minutes, prepare a ten-minute break this morning, so we can talk, press.
I got you.
Be back with you shortly, please. Uh, C, uh, as to begin our discussion on the implementation of the cigarette tax. Y'all know, Monday night, this happened a week ago tonight, West County Board Supervisors passed their ordinance implementing the cigarette tax. Uh, they can't, as, uh, as in meals and lodging, the town has the tax in place, they'll not be able to come within the town to collect that tax, so there won't be, for lack of a better term, it's not built a taxation on the cigarette tax. So, I notice, Kevin, I'm going, I know you collected a lot of data here, it was in our agenda packet. I read the county's resolution, their ordinance. You know, if we decide to go forward, Richlands is a happy place. Matter of fact, I think we may be one of the few localities on this southern map that couldn't have cigarette tax.
I understand.
And, uh, I don't know if the council wishes to move forward, we can talk to Kevin, but we, we've got two examples of an ordinance. If we choose to move forward, then hopefully Kevin will have to reinvent the wheel, he could just take them and modify them to meet the town. But before we get into that, uh, I'm interested in hearing comments, uh, from the governing bodies or, uh... I'm gonna start with Scott, you go?
Sure, so Mayor, I understand, once the county adopted this cigarette tax, that they are able to claim that tax in the town of Dainte at the rate that they approved, correct?
As it exists right now.
As it exists. So the town residents are willing to pay that tax at a minimum, uh, not necessarily the minimum, but they're gonna pay that tax, or a tax regardless. So, uh, for us to adopt something similar, or the same, similar ordinance within the town, uh, we would be able to set our own rate, and we have jurisdiction over the town that they wouldn't be able to tax within the town.
That's true.
To me, Mayor, I mean, it's, you know, I'm, I'm not for increasing tax, having an increased tax burden on our citizens. But to me, the decision's already been made. Uh, once the county does that, uh, you know, my suggestion would be to follow suit at the same rate, uh, and have our legal counsel draw up the documents.
Okay, go.
Same way, I think we need to go by their same policy and adopt it in town.
Okay, Deanna?
I guess I want to hear what is discussed, if it was this thing.
This is it?
Yes, sir, okay, well, I read it and...
Kevin's already done it.
Yeah.
Ms. family?
Um, and to follow up with what Scott said, is that this is something the county has already passed, and our residents are gonna be paying it. And I am sure that our residents would like to see that money being used in Dainte for their citizens, for, for programs, for the upkeep of the town. So that would be why I would support it.
Pursue.
I do feel like we need to have the tax, and it's already set, the precedent's already set for us. I feel that if we raised the rate, the only problem I have is discouraging young smokers, young smoking, children. And if we raised that, that might discourage them, but also hate to raise it and run people out of town also.
True.
So, I'm happy with it.
Just keep it at seven.
I'm happy, I'm happy to follow in suit also.
Mr. Whit, Mr. Elijah?
I agree with, uh, with Scott, Mary, Mayor, the, the town, I mean, the county set the precedent, it's either, it's either we tax it in town and receive the benefit of the tax, or we give it to the county and being elected to represent the town and citizens, I think there'd only be wise to capture that income here and use it to the benefit of their good. But also, just like Scott, I'm not a fan of increasing or, you know, proposing new taxes on citizens, but the precedent's been set. So at twenty-five cents a pack, I don't think there's, I don't think there's really much of a option as far as can we go lower and bring more business into the town, because we're, the amount of money that's gonna take to, uh, put a stamp in the administrative, administrative costs, it's not gonna be worth trying to do that. If they were forty cents or higher, we could probably do that, but with what we're at, I think we need to stay with exactly what the county's at and move forward.
I sort of think it's a good start point, we can get it year to year. Uh, Kevin, now, I've been reading, uh, this is the dangerous part of my understanding here. So, if we move forward with this and we, we pass it, when Kevin gets us an ordinance, the responsibility, we'll have to have somebody in-house to deal with the distributors, buy the stamps to get, uh, sell to the distributors, and then our local law enforcement does periodic checks to all the cigarette locations to see that, in fact, those stamps are on there.
Yes.
And you've got some role here, what's your role in it?
Basically, I don't receive or be ultimately responsible, you know, for it.
That's good, you're the ultimate responsible. That's what I wanted to hear you say.
Mayor, is there a, um, is there an agency where we can find out exactly how much is sold within the town? So that way we can plan accordingly with the budget? Uh, I know that we talked to other localities about their revenue, but is there any agency, or can we maybe have Kevin try to figure that out? If there's someone that we can contact and get an idea of what amount or quantity of cigarettes is sold in the town of Dainte, so that way we can add that. If it is proposed and approved, uh, I'd like to know what we're looking at from potential revenue to add that to the proposed budget as well.
Sure, does that stamp ever pay?
They will pay.
So they have to open every cart with stamps? They stamp it before they put them in the cart.
The distributor.
It's on them.
It's on them.
It's on the distributors, it's their responsibility.
Or they're in, or not, or stolen.
If, every, every, uh, business that is selling cigarettes will have to buy stamps.
They have to open every cart with stamps when they sell.
Well, they would, they would actually, the distributor would actually do that, so when they would receive.
They will from Virginia wholesale, they got that.
Yeah, yeah, every, every business, yeah, in, in the town.
It's the same as they do, if you look on the bottom of your rack, there's already a Virginia stamp on there that they're getting, so. But at the time, I, I'm thinking, now Kevin, if I understood, this goes into effect when the county's July one, is my understanding. So, at a minimum, I hope tonight, and what I'm hearing, I think we probably need to pass a motion to authorize Mr. Taylor to develop an ordinance for us to pass, for the council to consider. Uh, I'm gonna ask council, I know we've talked about the possibility of, I think Scott has mentioned earlier, we may have a budget committee meeting two weeks from tonight, which would be the twenty-fourth. If council would be willing, I'd like to, to allow us time to get ready, is, who's, do you have somebody in-house that you're thinking about to receive word with this?
Yeah, I think it would be really good for Janne for her to do that, uh, because we also need to do reporting.
Yes.
Uh, so, if you remember when we did the interview and so forth, she loves spreadsheets and reports, so we're just gonna let her just love on them.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, if we're gonna be, I mean, if we're gonna do this, I'd like for it to go on effect July one, for budgetary purposes.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
So, that's why I'm willing, I'm wondering, if council be willing to have a continued council meeting on the twenty-fourth, to review the ordinance and to make a decision moving forward, instead of waiting. I don't, I really think we're pushing us getting ready to do this by July one, if we wait till June the fourteenth. Am I making sense?
I would recommend that, Mayor, one reason is because we can, we can try to figure out some information on what the administrative cost of the stamps will be compared to the rate.
Yeah, I will bet, Kevin, will the distributors, it's kind of like meals and lodging, will they get some kind of fee for collect, doing, who gets the fee for collecting that tax?
I was noticing here in Richlands, they had a, in their ordinance, they had a, let's see here, they were entitled to... And to sell such stamps to a local dealer or other agent trader shall allow a discount of point zero zero six, a cent per stamp, the face value thereof, the cost will be concurred by the dealer or agent fixing the stamps.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to say.
Yeah. And Russell County's, is in page three, so they do like a ten cent, one ten.
The town actually, I think, pays for the stamps.
Yes.
But the, you're basically helping them recoup their cost and sticking the stamps to the bags.
That's right, gotcha.
Yeah, and they've a tenth of it, now I guess that's whatever y'all will suggest.
Could, can I get a motion to authorize our town attorney to prepare an ordinance for the implementation of the cigarette tax in Lebanon? So, Mr.?
One second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All those that favor the motion say aye. Vote same side. Kevin, there's one other thing you mentioned, you maybe mentioned me earlier, I'm assuming that we'll have to have a public hearing on this, or do?
I haven't found, I mean, I've looked at it two, three times, I have a town where there's a requirement for a separate public hearing for this, I mean, if you ordinarily have to have a public hearing before enacting the tax, yes, you would, but as far as for this particular tax specifically, I have a kind of code section that says you have to pass one, but, you know, if there's a general code section that says before you impose a new tax, you have to have a public hearing, obviously you would. I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to have it, just because, you know, just keep a public informed of what you're doing and why, because, you know, if you just have a newspaper, you know, town council passes cigarette tax, I mean, it's gonna be a lot more, more avalanche if you let people come in and explain to them, you know, all we're asking for is what you're gonna be paying anyway.
Well, I notice, the reason I ask you, I noticed the county had one.
Well, county has to for any ordinance.
Okay. Well, should, I mean, would it, are you good to have an ordinance, or you'd be able meet on the twenty-fourth, two weeks from tonight?
As far as I know.
Would it be, would it be appropriate to schedule a public hearing for that night?
When's your budget here?
That night? No, that's just a work session, budget hearing won't be until the middle of June, which is gonna make it rough, to get ready.
I mean, you, if you want, I mean, basically the public...
See, they had a public hearing, and then that night they passed last week, it was, had a public hearing, then buggered it.
Kevin, with that meals and lodging, we had to, we couldn't just have a public hearing, and then the next two weeks or whatever implement it, we had to wait like almost a quarter, and you did, I mean, why did we have to wait, was that on our own, or is that just maybe for county purposes, we started on a quarter or something?
All right, did we bug, by the way? Okay. We got a motion in a second on authorizing our town attorney to develop an ordinance for cigarette tax, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side.
And you want me to use the same numbers as the county?
Yes, same, one point, one cent, or whatever, it's point one two five, or however you write it. Then you'll need to put different things in there, I understand that.
That is cigarettes only, correct? Filtered cigarettes.
Yes.
Did you want to say anything, Jeff?
No.
Right now, there's no tax for, in the state of Virginia, you can't tax vape, right?
Yeah, Virginia passed it, six point six milliliter, or it's six point six cents per milliliter.
What happened to the county last week?
They didn't include it, they didn't include vape or scold or anything like that.
It was just cigarettes.
Cigarettes only.
In the pack.
Things like what, one point two cents?
One, one two five.
Per, yeah, per cigarette.
Yeah. Twenty-five cents a carton, I mean, a pack. Deanna, are you ready to talk about senior yard signs, or not?
Brad, we've got some copies.
Did you come to everybody or just me?
I just came for you.
Okay.
I moved down, I really didn't want to get that.
Okay. I'll wait, Deanna, talk more about it. We've just been trying to come to a, some kind of a consensus, to come up with something we can do for our seniors. We were initially approached to do the banners, and the cheapest banner cost starting from five was thirty-six dollars.
And we didn't do those last year?
We didn't do those last year. Thirty-six, now one sixteen is four thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars, and then these are examples of yard signs that Preston Ball could have made, and I believe they were, how much were they in the other?
Twelve dollars.
Twelve.
Do they have a picture of?
Of each senior's picture. And that would be, you have, fourteen dollars.
There's a hundred, there's a hundred sixteen seniors, and I said something about doing extra ones, so we could put them out in the town, would be like fifteen hundred dollars, but, and then we got a close call.
I'll pass down the examples of the yard signs.
These are, these are what he came up with last year, or?
Mr. Wilson, council code, do we need?
What, seven?
All those, okay.
And how much was Jerry's signs, Deanna?
Sixteen, ninety-eight, seventy-five.
Yeah, I wanna see, I wanna see, so, everybody got one of those, Deanna?
What would Jerry's signs total be, if you got the one sixteen and then a couple left there, to put in town?
The total, I've got him at a hundred and twenty-five, the total is sixteen, fifty-eight, seventy-five. And there's half the target to parse, so you make something that did two, three days.
Well, we're still in a COVID year, and it's, we're getting there, maybe this time next year, things will return to normal, in a normal state of operation. I know the school, I already know the school is not doing the banners, so, it's still, I'll just, I'll leave it, Parks and Rec Committee Chair.
Well, I mean, I, I'd like to give the seniors a token of, from the town, to say that we're proud of them, and kind of a congratulations, you know, because this year has been hard. I mean, I think it's a nice memento, it's a nice gift, you know, to have the yard sign from the town, it's a nice gesture, I mean, that's my opinion. And I do know that not all of our seniors live in the town limits, but I think they all need to know that we're proud of them, and we support them in what their future members are, which is my opinion.
Well, we're saying that last year was worse, these have been going through the same thing, and it will be still going, the COVID will still be going when they were in place, so their year has been as bad as last year's, senior's. I don't think there's any difference in the, in, the years they've played.
Congratulations issue, with the restrictions.
Mayor, I agree with Deanna, we need to, I'd like to do something. I actually was, had three seniors that worked at Walgreens, and they were under the impression we were, wanna discuss the large hanging banners tonight, and I revisited my agenda to make sure that we wasn't. I think they were more receptive after we get the feedback from them, they had mentioned maybe putting up a sign somewhere, not necessarily yard signs, but, you know, I know that not every senior lives in the town eleven, but I think, regardless if we do yard signs or not, I think some of this, I mean, a sign like this on the middle school lawn, where we had our bicep tenure right there essentially in town, I think that would be nice, regardless if we do the...
Could we do it across Main Street?
Or, yes, across Main Street, yes.
I think across Main Street would be, would be great.
That'd probably be better than on the grounds.
I mean, I love, I love the colors, I love the detail, I mean, if we can do something like this across Main Street, and...
Kevin, leave the year off of it. We're usable.
This is attachable right here, Elijah, too, it would take a yard sign.
Is it snap on? You got some extra headers and a clip.
Well, I, I'm not really here for what you all want, if you just want a sign on Main Street, you don't want to do the yard.
I want both.
She wants both.
She wants, well, what I was going to do is get extra, that they could put up one of their last sign, put up one in the town, and one here, one down in front of their community building, throughout the town, just the yard sign.
Like the, the yard sign.
Yeah, and one for every senior too, but, I mean, get extra, so we can put them out throughout the town.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what you said, you, you wanted to get a hundred and twenty-five rather than a hundred and sixteen, so we can put them through town.
What's the price quote, again?
The, one of the quotes was sixteen, fifty-eight, seventy-five, and I think Preston's comes out to fifteen hundred.
Could he use this sign?
Can you use that sign?
Could Preston link that sign?
I think, I think if Preston was a twelve, if Preston was a twelve, I think he could take that design and make it.
That's what I'm saying, I don't like those that he sent you.
I'm in favor of the sign across Main Street, in all seriousness, I think that's a really nice gesture. My only issue with the yard signs are, if they're, if they don't have their portrait on them, they're not as personable, but, if the council's gonna move on doing something for the seniors, I think we should do something a little more personable, just like the banner across Main Street, maybe even having some type of a congratulation, a mental pool, a pool party, or something like that, for the amount of money we're spending on yard signs, we could probably feed them, and actually be able to communicate with them, and talk to them, and tell them really, we congratulate them, instead of just putting a sign on the yard, that's, that's my opinion.
I agree with Elijah, I'd like to do one or the other, and I think either this sign across the road, or signs throughout town would be more appropriate, but that's just, that's just me, I mean...
Well, I just said that my thought is that they would have something to have, as each person, to have themselves, and last year, I mean, some of them said they live out of town, that, I mean, it's just for them personally, it's not for them because they're in town or anything, but it's to have personally, like Jacob, they lived out of town, theirs was up, and I saw several out of town that didn't live in town, just because they don't live in town doesn't mean they wouldn't appreciate it, I'm, I'm holding a motion that would get Preston at twelve dollars for a hundred and twenty-five, and do this one, this one.
We want Deanna, y'all like that one.
He's just gonna have to change it a little bit.
Yeah, they'll have to change it, send it forward, I guess, they're not copyright there.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll save it in.
We have a motion in a second, for the, for the local vendor. Is there any further discussion?
So this is just for yard signs only?
Correct.
That's twelve dollars, and a hundred and twenty-five's fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Oh, I'll agree. All thumbs?
No.
No.
Four two. Motion passes.
We need to make our motion, we're ready to do the big banners now, that we know.
I like, I would have liked to make a motion, you got to ask Coonies to make a sign like this, or something, to go over Main Street.
So, motion, aye.
That's a different person, who would have sent it.
Bobby Cooney makes the big signs.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, it would have to be a different motion, because this is a different person.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's a motion to approve.
I thought I just asked, was it for one or the other?
It was, it was just for the yard.
It was just for the yard signs, Mary wants me to contact Cooney to do the banner across Main Street. And I'm sure, let me ask you this, Mary, is that something, the one on Main Street, could we not put the year on it, just congratulate, congratulate the place, so we can use it?
And use it every year.
Y'all laughed at that a minute ago when I said that.
That's such a good idea, Mr. Debbie.
Right on this, but I think Cooney can put the year on it, too, and...
And, and it can change your year, just like we do before the July.
You need the year on there, if you're... Somebody make a motion for it, we'll move it on.
I thought I did it.
No, I think, uh, Deanna, Deanna, did Mary make a motion regarding the banner?
I think she did.
You told her to say that?
I did not.
Is there a second? To the motion for the banner across Main Street? That's all, is that one? Motion fails for the lack of a second. Any other discussion regarding senior graduation signs? All right there, Mr. Blakeness, you go down to the panel members and report.
All right, I've just got one thing, and I guess, Dole, you'll take it from here, it's the part-time personnel, for Billy's cruise the street.
Uh, I have five applications for summer help, I make a motion, we have all five of them, work on my four days a week, as seasonal employees, seasonal employees.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion in a second.
I have a concern from, after checking the reference, is that something we need to do in closed session?
Yes, sir. Okay, Dole, you look around your motion at this time? Deanna, look around your second.
No, I'm glad that you're concerned, I'm not here to pull you down.
Now, I'm, what about our seasonal employees to operate the pub, Kevin? Or does anyone, Dole, I guess, do you have a list for seasonal employees at the top Or does anyone, Doll, I guess, do you have a list for seasonal employees that operate the pool, or do we have? Okay, never mind.
That's all I have, Mayor.
You did that on purpose, did you? Okay, Chief.
Yes, sir, and I'll just, I'll be real quick too, just to give you, we served forty total summonses for the month of April, had twenty-four total arrests, responded to eight crashes, thirty-three assist motors, patrol eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight miles, and responded to four hundred and twenty-one total calls for service. Had a, a, operation with DTF that actually went down at the, in town, come in and we were able to get a pretty high price target, we were looking for on that, so, and the documents are still sealed, but, just so you know, they, there is a pretty good target that we've been looking for because we were able to get with DTF.
The tobacco pound or something, what's that?
The DTF drug cash course.
Drug cash course, okay.
So that was good, it was a bust of, of several fentanyl packets, hydrocodone, zoratag, so that, so that was good. He was also successful on two early purchases, and we pulled him off in the actual detail for a while, he conducted quite a bit of surveillance on a, on another target that we had talked about with the assistance of the state police surveillance brand, so, he was pretty, pretty busy to speak with that. But his numbers was down, and if you looked at his report, his numbers were down, it's because he, several days was just surveillance for him, but he did well. C-TAC took in seven total transfers, and we were able to use Chris Need for two additional calls to help us to cut down a little overtime on that. Also, I talked to Mr. Blankenship about this, and he's probably made you aware, but I did apply for a body camera grant from DCJS, and we made aware that we did receive that, so we'll give money to get, I put in enough for the grant to get thirteen body cameras and a storage system, which is our problem now, is we don't know where to store all our footage. And the ones we have are really going down again, so hopefully those will all be replaced by the end of this month. That's about it, of course, if anybody has any questions, we can answer on the incident this weekend.
You might want to update us on what happened this weekend.
Okay, Saturday, right before three o'clock, officers Sergeant Weiss and Matt Hurd responded to a call on Dodge Street of a report, a hysterical woman called in and reported someone had been shot. Found and found, they did find a victim that had been shot in the upper torso, shooter was gone. When they got there, within about fifteen minutes, they had located him and taken him into custody without incident, he surrendered. Myself, we called in state police, called in the special sheriff's office, and his accident come out and help us, we all kind of got together. The problem was, was he, when he ran and ditched the gun, we couldn't find the gun, after about three hours, we were able to locate the gun with the help of a BSP KNI, we found it in ten minutes. So, so we got the gun, we did charge the nineteen-year-old Jonathan Rotten from Dodge Street, we did charge him with aggravated malicious wounded. The, the victim is alive, or was alive this morning, but not looking good.
We appreciate your guys and you and your service on working that, that's a difficult thing to hear in a town that has signs, but it seems to be going out a lot around us.
I, I had to, I don't know why, why I did, but I actually watched the body camera footage of James Wayne Norton, the chief in Norton, and it was rough. It's getting crazy the other day.
It is, yeah.
Mayor and council, is it appropriate for the chief to ask the mayor to make some house calls in that area, just to let him know that everything's, it was just an isolated domestic issue, or family issue, and maybe make some house calls to make some of his residents.
We can, and I actually spoke to, I forget his name now. George, there's a, I actually spoke to him a couple of times, and yeah, we can, we can do that tomorrow and make some calls, and Chris will know that we're good, that everything's, hopefully isolated incident.
Yeah, I've got a lot of questions that I don't have answers to, and really would rather not, as it's a party.
You try to order door first, and then, if they're in the home, something call?
Just as long as you just let them know what's going on.
Just go and let them see them.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do, we can do some.
And then for the home, something call?
Our officer at the academy, he's graduated this month?
Graduated.
Is he going to graduate this month?
He graduates May twenty-first. I did call, some of the council members had asked me to call and see if they could attend, they are having a public ceremony, they're just going to do it in-house. But I would like to, typically, when they come back, what's happened in the past is if they just, they do their oath, their code of ethics, I would like to ask if you, if you guys would allow me to bring you to the council and do that with any front of the council.
That'd be great.
On the twenty-first?
Well, I, we can do it on the next council meeting, the, the June council meeting, just to do something for him.
How long of an event is that today?
Two, two minutes.
We're heading to meet, looks like we're going to be meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I'll be at the town twenty-fourth, Mayor.
Who's that?
Elijah.
You're making a bad mistake. That's all right, you trust us, don't you?
Do that little conundrum on the front there.
He, he passed his driving week last week.
Good.
And he passed that pretty well, so his only hurdle from now to the twenty-first, I believe, will be the state test.
So, we'll look, we'll look for the, to the June meeting to ask him, okay? Anything else for the chief? Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Mr. Blankenship and I went to court this past month with the Luther's case up here at BAM, and I think we are partly on track to get that situation straightened out. One of the owners appeared in court, and Mr. Blankenship gave him a detailed list of what he needed, and I think he ended up being complied with, what about winning, Kevin?
Uh, thirty days, I think it's what it was, and of course, I know he's already been out there working, of course, just talking to him, he was very kind and ready to clean it up and sort it forth, so, but I have already seen after working and doing, so, it's always going.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, committee reports, I want to start with Mary.
Yes, banners have been ordered, they received a check, they will have the Cedar Fest here prior to June first, so we can hang them on June first. He did ask for one of our banners to, just for, for measurements and to make sure it's, everything is the same, the only difference is that they were a hair short, an extra inch and five eighths, and so he said, you take care of that. So that's on track, the only other two things I would ask for the council to consider is, well, one thing is recognizing the wrestling team that went to state, as we did in years past. They were just recognized by the school board, and maybe they could be recognized or at least invited to the June meeting for that recognition. And then Kevin did provide me with an update on Point Broadbent, what their quote would be for us, he is waiting on Chantel to come, he's going to contact them, you know, Millie, who's this week, asking for an updated quote to provide the service to the town, and then maybe we can move forward.
Okay. Good deal. Mr. Deanna, do you have anything else to add?
No, you are, I can prove everything that we discussed.
Brad, you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Elijah, streets?
Uh, we're down about thirty-four thousand dollars on, on total expenditure for street department, Mayor, due to labor, being used elsewhere, water leaks, things like that, but I will say that water loss was down twelve percent, so.
That's good.
It went from thirty-two to twenty, so I'm okay with that, because there's other places I could spend street money before July first to make up for that, but just let the water sewer department know that we appreciate the, the work of the lease.
That's all right.
Sure, that twenty percent number way better than thirty-two, but other than that, Mayor, I think everything's going just plain cloud of books, dealing process of working on downtown area with what we approved, and I foresee us being able to exhaust off of that before July first with the state street.
So Doll, we're going in closed session regarding personnel, Scott, you have anything at this time, or you wish to wait till later, or what?
I'll just say that plan on meeting possibly on the twenty-fourth, if the majority of the council can be here, that's one of the very few days I have available, I'll be glad to get with Elijah afterwards when he gets back in town.
Are you gone all week, Elijah?
I'll be gone from the twenty-third to the twenty-seventh, I'll be back Thursday.
The only other date maybe I have available is the twentieth, but we'll look at that maybe when I have time to check my schedule here just shortly, maybe after closed session, but, you know, determine when we get the majority of the council here. At your seat, I asked Kevin to provide a, a water sewer garbage rate proposal, this is what I talked about that I'd like to propose for the budget for this coming fiscal year.
Mark, this one?
Yep, it shows, we'd ask Kevin to prepare a document.
That's your sheet.
No, that's my mark, Kevin.
Does everyone have to have their sheet?
Oh, so, I don't want to, Kevin, does everybody have a copy of this, or just me? I just gave yours.
I'll play them up there, never mind.
This is, this is.
I ain't gonna tell them. Well, this is about it.
I'll get, this is about it.
I'll get Kevin to email this out to the rest of the council, it just shows the impact of rate changes on water and sewer for the upcoming fiscal year, to open it up for discussion again in our next budget meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we can get a copy of that?
Kevin, if you would, go ahead and email that out as to council and mayor. I'll do it. And Elijah?
Same with me, Kevin.
Okay, and if anybody else has a proposal on any rate changes or the water sewer regards, please give them to Kevin to send out to council prior to, to our next budget meeting.
Thank you, Scott. All business, we're going to discuss the current golf cart ordinance, I'm not sure I have it, who put that on the agenda?
I didn't, Mayor.
Elijah?
I would just like for us to review the golf cart ordinance, I know that there's several people that in town that actually have golf carts, and the way current states, you can operate a golf cart or a utility vehicle in the speed limit zones of twenty-five mile per hour or less, you cannot be on a thirty-five mile an hour street or cross a thirty-five mile an hour street. I know with the events, didn't, last year I had to bring this up because we canceled most of the events, I think it'd be a real asset for, for our community to be able to ride golf carts to our downtown events, especially since we're having several of them this year. We already have an ordinance in place. The only, the only difference would be, would be to allow those golf carts on Main Street in thirty-five mile per hour zones.
That's a state ordinance.
I think you're trying to do it at thirty-five mile an hour zones. Period. Can you verify that for me?
I, when we did the ordinance, I checked.
Virginia State Code says golf carts are not even thirty-five.
Yes, twenty-five or less, and we.
Even with a slow-moving vehicle, trying?
See, Virginia Code defines too, they define a golf cart and they define a slow-moving vehicle. So, slow-moving vehicle can, with proper placard, operate in a thirty-five zone.
Or a tractor.
Yes, but there's, but they, they give a specific definition for a golf cart, so the code recognizes, recognizes them as two different things.
The state code limits it to twenty-five miles an hour?
And let her race.
Or less?
So there's no way to get people to downtown with their golf carts if they live outside of the twenty-five mile, well, it's unsafe.
Introduce the speed limit, I guess.
Do that for, can we, can we do that for the festival?
Unless we, unless we decide to have a parade that morning, load that in the parade route and have a golf cart parade that takes it out.
One in, one out.
Can we do something similar for, by event, Kevin, what he said?
I mean, you can close the street to traffic if you want to.
But we can't, we can't close all the lanes.
Right, we can, we can apply for a parade permit and have everybody that wants to take their golf cart be at a certain time, and we'll have a parade from one area to the other, and get them all down there.
We think, Elijah.
Hey, gonna get that more asshole than that.
That's true.
They have a hot parade. You have to have one of this, and one of that.
Can you send that code section to Elijah for me?
I've probably got it right here.
Oh, you got it?
This is Virginia Code forty-six point two dash one hundred, I was sitting over.
Forty-six to one hundred is the definitions, so the code would actually be, forty-six to one hundred is just definitions.
Forty-six point two dash nine fifteen point one.
Nine fifteen, yeah.
I just thought it'd be neat to have families that ride golf carts downtown, Mayor, during those city fairs and whatnot, now we've got several people to ask. Like myself, I live in a twenty-five mile per hour zone, but I have to hit the town here drive to get to downtown, and anybody from.
Windies on, top of the.
Yeah, windies on and from here out, but I have to also, so if you live in historic downtown, you're okay, I guess.
That's right.
There you go, Charlie.
Make a motion to rent a golf cart for the mayor.
Yeah. You're all smart, you're all smart.
Got a good second, Doll, second.
Okay, anything else on that, Elijah?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing personnel?
Legal, please.
And legal?
I'll make a motion.
Personnel will be discussed, part-time employment?
Employee compensation as well, Mayor.
Employee compensation, okay. See, did we, Brad made the motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Further discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
The public say aye.
What, 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 Karen?
Yes.